This is the regular meeting at the Nevada City Council, Monday, May 23rd to 2022, 6:00 PM. Call.
Brian Anderson. Or Mivin?
Here.
Katie Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson. Steve Gag.
Here.
Cindy here.
Here. We'll be on to the approval of the agenda. We will be tabling the closed session as published.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Please.
Hi.
I don't have lights. Prepare to convene a public hearing. FY 2021-22 Budget Amendment Number One. Is there anyone to speak? Any feedback? No comments? 13th Resolution Number 0822122, Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2122 Budget Amendment Number One.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Hi.
Motion carries. Public hearing regarding the rezoning of property at 1002 D Avenue. Are there people here to speak this public hearing? Comments? No comments? Need a motion for ordinance number 1025 2021-2022, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Map of the City of Nevada, Iowa By Amending the Zoning Classification, The Parcel of Land Owned by Kerry P. Martin At 1002 D Avenue Located Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Nevada, Iowa From Limited Industrial District to Residential District.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Let's vote.
Hi.
Motion carries. This is the public hearing regarding the rezoning of property at 4611th Street. Are there persons to speak? Comments? No comments? Looking for a motion for ordinance number 1026 2021-2022, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Map of the City of Nevada, Iowa By Amending the Zoning Classification, The Parcel of Land Owned by Michael Al Dote At 436 11th Street Located Within the Corporate Limits of the City of Nevada, Iowa From Limited Industrial District to Residential District.
Move to approve.
Motion and second. We'll trust Karen to iron that up. You got it. Any other discussion? Please vote. I don't know.
He said hi.
Dane? Oh. Yes, thank you.
So just said something.
Yep. Looking at approval or the consent agenda? Any items? Okay, move forward. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any discussion? Please vote.
Hi.
It's time of a public forum. It's time set aside for comments from the public On topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. We have three agenda items and at least one person speak. Let's start with, I lost it. The proclamation for the Kiwanis 50th Anniversary. Not going to read the whole proclamation, but some of these, some of what the Kiwanis has done is near and dear to my heart. And since I'm sitting here tonight, I get to say, teammates. Okay, Kiwanis International is a global community of clubs, members, and partners dedicated to improving the lives of children one community at a time. And here in Nevada, that's exactly what's happened. In addition to improving the lives of children in the Nevada community and around the world, The Kiwanis Clubs members have encouraged living by the golden rule, promoting higher professional standards, Developing a more intelligent and serviceable citizenship, as well as That list of wonderful list of things they've done. They vigorously serve the Nevada community through teammates, scholarships, raising readers, Adopt a Highway, Pediatric Trauma Kits, and a multitude of fundraising efforts. And I'm not Brett Barker, so now therefore be it resolved that I, in place of Brett Barker, Mayor of the City of Nevada, Do hereby proclaim May 2022 as the Kiwanis of Nevada 50th Anniversary. So I urge citizens to applaud the members of the Kiwanis Club, and we'll do that here as well. Congratulations. So now you're going to hear where my loyalty lies. Not to be outdone, no, not to be outdone by the Kiwanis. So Rotarians are celebrating their 100th anniversary in Nevada. Nevada Rotary is part of a global network of 1.4 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers. And here in Nevada, the Nevada Rotary was started in May of 1972. That doesn't sound right. Anybody know what the real number is? That's not 100 years.
22.
Okay.
1922.
1922? Okay.
Typo, sorry.
Typo, sorry. It's okay. Since its inception, Nevada Rotary's achievements in Nevada have consisted of steady and traditional contributions to community life. They too have a long list of the ways that they have shared responsibility to take on the world's most persistent issues, Both globally and here in Nevada. Nevada Rotary has actively served the Nevada community through projects like Operation Warm, The Backpack Buddies Program, Children's Reading Room at the Public Library, And Nevada Feeds the World, Preparing 51,200 Meals for the Hungry. The club, who is 60 members strong, will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. And now therefore be it resolved that I, in place of Brett Barker, the Mayor of the City of Nevada, Iowa, Do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Nevada Rotary 100th Anniversary. And I again urge our citizens to applaud the members of the Nevada Rotary Club, and we'll do the same. Now, I'm guessing I'm supposed to have found something in my packet somewhere about historical. Would you be prepared to speak or invite the community? Please do. If you could go to the microphone and identify yourself properly, that would be helpful.
Like the company. Did you have anything in your packets?
Yes, we do.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, I'm Marla Spring. I'm the Secretary of the Nevada Historical Society.
I'm Deb Locker, former board member, now a member.
Cindy Grismore, former board member, Vice President last year, and now a member.
Welcome. And we are just here to invite you all to an event that we started planning three years ago. And with COVID and everything else that's gone on, we just keep pushing it back, and we're done pushing it back. So we are together this year. And so what we have, I'm going to look back to Main Street Nevada, and as they did their surveys, they talked about, People wanted things to draw people together, activities where people could bring their families, music activities, that sort of thing. And that's exactly what we have planned for the City of Nevada on June 18th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. And it's an afternoon of music. We've got some vendors coming to sell food. We've got some craft vendors there with handmade artwork. And then also the buildings will be open for tours in between the bands. And we just want people to come with their families, family atmosphere, And then realize that Evergreen Lane is as close to a public park as we can get, not being funded as a public park. You don't have to take that on, but But we just want people to be able to let them know that that property is there for them to enjoy. You know, we have activities a lot, but they can come any day of the week, as long as it's daylight out to enjoy the property. So it's just an open invitation. The other reason we're here tonight is because for our activity, we would like some special permission for parking along the streets. And that's what's in your packet. We've kind of drawn a map about how we would like permission on the various streets To allow emergency vehicles to get through if they need, plus also the safety of the people attending the event To get to and from their cars. We'll have parking at the elementary. We'll have parking at the Lutheran Church. But we're anticipating we're going to need more, so we're thinking positively. So that's what, we're here to ask permission for that. We're also here to ask permission to hang one of our signs out on the Lincoln Jefferson Park to advertise that. And I think that that's everything we're asking for tonight.
Okay. Okay, so I understand that Sergeant Henderson's been working with you and the parking situation, Because you have three years, you've worked through that before, that that doesn't require City Council approval. But the signs. And because it's on the public forum, we won't be able to take action on it this meeting, But it can certainly, if the old council be put on for the next agenda.
So is that something we need to be present for then, or you'll just take care of that in the months? No?
We'll just take care of that.
Fantastic.
Unless you want to be here to cheer us on.
Oh, yes. They talked about some of the vendors need to be inspected. That came up, and I don't know, does anyone know about that? If we have food vendors, they will have their, their own inspection, but they said something about an inspection that day that need to be taken care of.
Yeah. So I can, I can give you the health inspector's contact information, and you can reach out to him. But that's similar to what we had to do with Pizza Pie Loser. We had to have, make sure that all the vendors have their license through the state. And then that, the day of the event, he came and showed up and made sure everyone was licensed. If they weren't, it wasn't really that big of a deal. He was able to get them licensed right away. I will, yeah.
So do they still have to be, have a permit on them if they've been at the farmer's market the morning that same day?
Unfortunately, they do, because it's, because it's a farmer's market, it is exempt in the state code. But it is not if it is a separate function for events.
Is this something we have to contact the vendor to be aware of this, or?
Usually the vendor, depending if it's a food vendor or not, they should, they should probably be aware of it. But it's probably safe to reach out to them, just to give them the heads up and talk to them about it. And if they haven't, still plenty of time to get that taken care of.
They've never vended in Nevada, they do need to have a Nevada vendor. Fire inspection. We wait.
Okay. Next question, after looking through the material we provided, is there anything else that we need to know that we maybe have overlooked? And I think the big thing is safety issues. That's what we're most concerned with.
I think the way, the way Sergeant Henderson's reporting to us that there are no issues or concerns, That they have, you haven't already been in dialogue about.
Okay.
So.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Much.
Go for it, see you all.
Yeah. Okay. Wade Presley, you go to the podium and Identify yourself by name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Wade Presley, 846 Shake Brook Drive in Nevada. And I'm here representing the Nevada Community Band, one of the three directors of the community band. And Couple pieces of information, similar to the Historical Society, just inviting Everyone here and everyone that is, you know, listening To come to the Nevada Community Band concerts. Our first concert will be on June 7th at 7:00 PM, Right out here in the pavilion for one hour. It's free. And we look forward to having a good crowd for that. This is our 22nd season of the Nevada Community Band, and we have a lot of interest. Thanks to the newsletter that has been coming out, the communication has really drawn in Some new members that have not participated before, even from outside of the city limits of Nevada. So we're excited to start that up. And we appreciate the fact that we have had some sponsors help us with the expenses that we have. And we'll list them all this evening, but we will be recognizing the sponsors, the business sponsors, And club sponsors on particular weeks that they have helped us out with sponsorships. The second issue, or just reason I'm speaking here tonight, is we also have created a banner That we would like to display on the fence. The community band, and I have talked with Brett Barker and Jordan about this in the past, But also just bringing it to the council's attention that we would like to hang this banner that we have. It will be eight feet by four feet on the fencing facing Lincoln Way for the duration of our season. So I was thinking that we could hang it on June 1st in advance of our first concert Through the end of our last concert, which is the week after July 4th. So like July 12th, I guess, yeah, July 12th, which will be our final concert with the community jazz band. And if there's any questions about that, I'd be willing to answer those. But I just came, wanted to come in front of the board. And thank you for your support in the past, and thank you for the use of the items that the city, The space and so forth to store things and chairs in the past. And we're looking forward to having beautiful weather here in a couple of weeks to start our 22nd season.
If it's, we'll look at the banner, request next, the next meeting.
Yeah.
We can add that to the agenda.
You won't have to do that until after your June 1st date, but put it on for the next agenda.
Okay. So then would we need to wait until it's officially cleared to hang it then? After that, June 6th?
Typically we would wait till after council action before we do that. I leave that to Jordan if he wants to make a preliminary and then ask for it to be ratified. But our past practice would, would say that council would take action first.
Okay. I can follow and imagine us not approving it.
I can, I can. Just here to be the bad guy.
I'm here just to make sure we're checking our boxes too. And we do it just come in the middle of the night and hang a banner, and people are asking, what is that banner hanging there now? So. We shouldn't do that. But we do have a design.
Some warning.
That is all ready to go, so I can fold that on and.
Go ahead and get it.
Have a special meeting in advance.
Yeah, we can do that.
We'll work on that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I can, I can submit that tomorrow.
Absolutely can't do that, so.
All right, thank you.
I didn't catch all of that. There are a lot of people talking at once. Are we talking about having a special meeting for that?
We'll work on that.
We'll let you know. I'll send out an email.
Okay, sounds good.
Marla, do you have a date that you want to aim for to get the banner up?
Start next meeting soon enough for your approval.
That's, that's what I'll, yeah.
Our next meeting's 13th.
13th, oh, then maybe we can do them both at the same time.
You can do them both.
Yeah.
Yeah, make it worth our time. Right.
Thank you for the clarification, Dane.
Let's move on to Old Business. Old Business 7A, approved pay request number one for the Field House from HPC LLC In the amount of $130,265.90.
Move to approve. Slowly.
Second.
Second, is there any? One of the, two of the names. I'm.
We should all just.
Any discussion about This particular item? I see none. Please vote.
Hi.
Motion carries. Old Business 7B, approved pay request number one For the 2022 Street Approvals Project from Manats Incorporated In the amount of $244,519.31.
Move to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Hi.
Motion carries. 7C, Old Business, approved change order number two For the wastewater treatment facility Phase 2 project from William Brothers In the amount of $87,765.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Yeah, okay. I didn't know if I could or not.
Your county member?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just, as I was reading through some of the background information about this. Mike, I just, I'm just looking for a moment of clarity. You seem to be prepared. Thank you. Can I have, there's the time, the time elements and the The conversation in the letter that was submitted to you regarding how, I think, as I read it, How engineering's been communicating with this particular contractor And their perception, a difference of perception of days and where that places us in the timeline. Can you just, the high points and assure us of that understanding about what's going on?
In regard to the time extension associated with this change order and the number of days that have been added to the contract, I'd be happy to give you a kind of an overview of this. So this change order incorporates five different kind of items That have come up in the course of the construction for the Phase 2 project. And we've lumped all these together in this one change order, so we're not coming to council with five separate change orders here. The first item, which is related to change order request number four, And R5 is the fifth revision of that after back and forth negotiations. That time extension, it will recommend a 92 calendar day Increase or adding to the contract completion date. This is a completion date contract. It's not working days. So we actually have a calendar day of when the contractor has to be complete with the work. And so based off of the addition of time, that 92 days covers Time extension for delay and able to do this element of the work Plus additional time needed because the work is happening during the winter period, Which they have expressed concern that they're not as efficient doing the work as when they would have been normally doing it. So there's a 92 days added there. The other item that adds time is number four, which is a weather delay request claim. That is based off of looking at abnormal weather conditions. So the, the days that they have asked or made a claim on, We have reviewed the weather records and found that those days that they're claiming Were, would be considered abnormal weather. So we look at the historical weather records with respect to precipitation and temperature And find that if they're above an amount of time, or above normal or outside of that normal, Not only for the day, but also for the month. So we take into consideration that though you may have had one day of, of weather that was, let's say precipitation, That for that day, the precipitation exceeded the historical average. But the rest of the month, there was zero precipitation. So we look at that whole month to determine if the month itself is abnormal. So just because you have one day, doesn't mean the rest of the month was better than what it should have been And would have allowed more work to happen. So based off of their claim, the data that they provided, the burden is on the contractor to, to provide information For us to make a determination if the weather is abnormal. We looked at the 15 calendar days, or there was 15 days that were submitted. And the review of that information, we did come to the conclusion that those days did meet the criteria of being abnormal. So we've recommended approval of that and adding 15 calendar days to the contract. Overall, it's 107 calendar days. That does push the completion date ultimately of the project into mid-January of 2024. From a overall project schedule perspective, that shouldn't be an issue. We're hopeful that the contractor can kind of accelerate their schedule, maybe as time moves along. We have quite a bit of time left on the project, but their, their claims are meritous And we are recommending approval of that. There was some disagreements regarding the time extension related to change order request number four. We did essentially sit down with city staff, with Williams Brothers representatives, with HR greens, And did work through those at the end of March, and did come to an agreement with the number of days that are presented. Now, there is a slight difference between what they have presented in their change order request number four. And it's a, it's a base offer of the calculation of the calendar days. The contract is set up for a six-day week working period. So the contractor is allowed to work from Monday through Saturday. Currently, Williams Brothers is working Monday through Friday. So when they calculated their calendar days, they did it based off of a five-day, Which pushed, pushed theirs, I think, to, it would have been 98 calendar days, if I remember correctly. I calculated it based off of the six working days that are allowed in the contract. And that's where I come up with the 92. So it has been discussed with Williams Brothers. I did it discuss this with them when I sent them the change order. They did execute the change order that's included in the packet, so they have essentially agreed to the 92 days. Are there further questions or clarifications on that matter? I don't know if I answered everything there for you, Barb.
When we did this, I knew when they were going to start doing it, right? This wasn't a secret, when they were going to start breaking ground and the weather, they're going to have to work through the timeframe they're going to have to work through.
That is correct. And, and that's kind of where the, when you look at like a weather delay claim, You look at what's abnormal. So whether the contractor is claiming that they plan to work every single day, Just because the weather may not be, you know, available for the work they're doing, It may not be considered abnormal with respect to historical record. So then the argument that they made here would be, these days are abnormal. And We would agree with that based off of that criteria. If there would have been days in that 15 days that the, the temperatures of precipitation That was below the historical average, and for the month, we were not exceeding or below historical average, Those days would, we would not have recommended that they would have been given an extension.
We've got to pay them $87,000 for them to take longer to do it.
The addition of cost is, is really more on changes and modifications to the work. And that reflected, that dollar amount reflects material and labor costs for those modifications. So the, like, all that amount is not for the time extension. It is for the additional material and labor Associated with modifications for each of those five items there. So there is, there is no cost impact on the weather delay claim. That's strictly a contract time impact. And then the other four have a cost impact. And then the one, number four, has, has a time impact.
$20,904 in labor. Eight order for.
Change order number four, change request four?
Yeah, change, change order request four. $20,904.
Yeah, and that is due to. Yeah, and, and that is due to additional work, additional special work that was not in the original contract.
Or reason why it wasn't in there?
We found, uh, during construction, um, based on what was submitted and reviewed, that there was a need to provide additional um, reinforcement and
Is that the sump pit one?
Um, no, number four is, uh, the oxidation ditch structural modifications. Um, it was our determination that to maintain the level of quality, which we felt was appropriate for the design, that those things be added in. That was
Alright, thank you.
The only other thing I was wondering about, Mike, was, um, in the letter clear back December sixth, there seemed to be a disconnect between how you use or how engineering generally use field order um, to authorize minor changes and what their perception of that proper use was for how they conducted business. Has that been resolved, uh, previously?
Yes, it has. They've requested that if we submit or direct them to do something of which there would be a cost impact, that we use a different mechanism to do so, which would be submitting to them what's called a request for proposal with the direction of what the modification would be in the expectation that they would be providing back either a cost for credit or add to the project. They, uh, the contractor had expressed that they feel that the field order is, um, not to be used and there will be a cost implication. We've, you know, there's some things that we issued via field order that we don't believe have a cost impact and, and they come back with a cost impact, so, which is, which is allowed. That field order form has kind of that language on there, that if the, the contractor feels that there's a cost associated with the, uh, direction given, that they should contact us and then that we'd resolve that. So, we've adjusted the, the use of the field order and, um, that, yeah, that issue's been taken care of.
That's within some normal parameters of doing business and expectations with.
Right. There's, within this contract, um, there's some general conditions which govern essentially kind of the rules of the game and how we approach different things. And so, the field order is allowed in there, the request for proposal is another mechanism. And so we've, we've worked with them to devise the, the right, uh, methods to communicate back and forth, but overall, we've been still very amenable to getting the work done with, with everyone, so. It's just, we do things a little different and it's, it's working out.
So anything else you had attempted to break to the, this body?
Any, just any questions that you may have, I'd be happy to do my best to answer for you on this change order and go through any details that you would like. I know there's quite a few things here, but the whole packet of information I submitted to Karen is a hundred and forty-four pages. There's, there's quite a bit of stuff here, but essentially, um, provided a, a recommendation each of these individual items for you with the supporting documentation there and all the background. So, council is fully aware of very, any correspondence we've had and any discussions. Um, again, the, the meeting that we held with Williams Brothers at the end of March uh, was very beneficial to get a lot of these resolved. We were kind of stuck in few spots with what, um, we had been discussing. And then, we were able to sit down and, and kind of negotiate kind of the final and, and get us through those. So, it was a productive meeting and we came out with, um, a good resolution, all these matters to keep things moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thing as well. Motion is second. Any other discussions? Please vote. Motion carries. New business A, approved amendment to master agreement from municipal engineering services for the Northwest subdivision survey in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, four hundred forty dollars. There a second?
A second.
Thank you.
I was just gonna provide a little bit more detail. Um, so this is going to be for, uh, some plans, so we can figure out if we actually need a lift station or not. So, um, with that development that's going on in the north, we're gonna make sure as Larry and HR Green have also gone through everything, we want to double check to make sure. That way, when houses are, are built on there, we don't have an issue with, uh, sewer. So, um, this is to get that whole entire property surveyed, that way we for now, yeah, future purposes, that we won't need a lift station in that area.
I think this is on the developer. We, we don't do this. We, I did a lot of legwork over the weekend. I don't see what this is, developers pay for this. I don't think we should pay for it, as you say. We're waiting for a lift station, you know, well, put in a lift station, but next thing, no, they're gonna want us to put in all the sewer and curb and everything else, we don't we don't have to develop it. I mean, I don't, I can't think of one we've ever done it. Won't pay for surveys or anything else. I think this is on the developer to have it surveyed. Going down a bad road by paying for it. I mean, I can't, I don't even remember who this is, it doesn't matter whose it is, it's just I think this is on the developer, like every other, what we've done. Yeah, uh, I don't think it's, it's city's place to pay for this. That's just me. I mean, that's somebody can, somebody's something that we've done before, but I can't think of any that we've, we've paid for this survey, there's someone else's development.
It isn't just for that development, it's for the whole entire area up in that section.
But yeah, but still, the developer will have to put in the sewer and that, and if we're gonna put in a lift station, I mean, we'll have to put one in, but as far as surveying it and doing solar bearings and everything I've been through on this proposal, that this is all developer stuff, this isn't really city stuff. Maybe lift station should be on the city, because we have to be able to provide, so their sewer will work, obviously. I mean, we have other lift stations, but as far as finding the pins and doing soil samples and all that, that's, to me, that's on the developer.
So, um, say if they do get a survey and it turns out that they do, that we do need a lift station. Um, Larry, will we need to, will we wanna get our own survey and double check that?
Well, we didn't survey, I'm sorry, Larry, you answered the question first. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The only reason we need a survey is the total survey to see if, if the gave this from our package that to the payment three. Uh, especially a chance to most of the forty-something lots to be served by gravity sewer by depending on the sewer that, that exists or not. There are, I think, eight to ten lots we projected that there may have to be some restrictions on, uh, on the elevation of the facility, because the sewer will be a little bit shallow. Friends, you may need to put in a eight-foot wall to the basement instead of nine-foot. You may need to, uh, uh, even have more than that, or something, you know. Typically, the, the lots are, the, the third floor elevations are set at about two feet of, of the street elevations. They may be, may be, may be just a little bit higher than that. So, the, the reason we need the total survey is just to make sure we send the sewers out there in the future that uh, we wanted to give a lot of impacted as far as the, uh, height of the first floors and the basements, so.
But I mean, let's say, let's say that I'm doing this, and I hired Fox. And they haven't surveyed. It's a city, don't we accept those surveys from someone else?
Typically, any subdivision, um, any, any engineering work is, is a part of the developer's responsibilities. Maybe it's typically going to review those, those plats and surveys.
So, so Brian, your, Brian, your question was, if a developer pays to have this done, are we gonna have to do it again if they say yes? Is that what you're asking?
What I've asked, yeah.
And what was the answer to that?
No, that's the last you said. Am I correct there?
It would not have to be redone.
Right.
So, we're not, at this point in time, all we need is the, uh, is the total survey. But while the surveyor's there, he just will do the la- the legal survey to establish the foundation existing from.
But my contention is that should be on the developer, not on the city.
So can we recoup it? Um, we do the survey and the develop, whatever the developer needs, that they bu- they pay us for that information.
But what if, then they decide not, and then we're out, we pay for it, and if no one ever develops it, and no one ever does anything, we just paid the money, there's no way to recoup it. Guess we had some sort of agreement and said we paid up, finally repaid us, but to me, I think it's on the developer. And I'm guessing that I, I just can't think of one we've done. We didn't do South Plan, we didn't do anything in Ridge. I think it's on the developer. Because it's his, it's their land. Their land, their survey. It doesn't do the city any good if they don't proceed to development. We just spent money that we really don't have the means to recoup unless we had some sort of agreement with the developers. But at that point, they just as well pay for it and have it done. That's how we drive, we can do what they want, or, you know, CGA or whatever it has, or Fox, or whoever they want to use. I, I just think that at that point, do I say, hey, I can't find the pins in my property, will the city pay to find them? That may be getting kind of extreme, but it's kind of the same thing. Maybe I'm crazy, anyone thinks I am, speak up, but that's just, I was looking at it. Am I crazy? Anyone? I mean,
I think you bring up a great point, Brian. We don't wanna set a precedent that, that we don't
I know.
I hadn't really, I guess, thought of that as part of it. I think I'm a little nervous that, you know, we're going is, is preparing for this, this big project. Probably would be really good to know if the lift station or not, or really kind of know what we're getting into. There's definitely some advantage to that. Is there sixteen thousand dollars worth of advantage? I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, they have to survey it anyway. So if they had paid to the survey and it was done, and we just have to, and HR Green just has to review it, then we're gonna know. Or like he said, Larry said, they might say, hey, Steve, you, you need to pass out your development, you can't have a nine-foot basement, or the sewer ain't gonna work. And then they like that or they don't, and if they don't like it, then we have to decide, is it worth the city to put in a lift station so they can have a nine-foot basement, seven, eight-foot basement? So, I guess my whole point is the survey's gotta be done, but it's I think it's on the developer, not on the city. Because we're gonna get the same information, but I don't think we should have to pay for it. I don't think our taxpayers should have to pay for it.
Yeah, so you wanna know a whole other story, but
Yeah, I, I agree with Brian for what that's worth. I think, uh, yeah, just that's a precedent I don't wanna set if we don't, you know, if that's not been done in the past, I don't know why we would, would do that now.
And I agree with your word precedent. You, I think, yeah, I, unless some, but I didn't explain myself very well, that makes sense. I just don't think it's, should be on our dime, so to speak. Nah, for getting people to develop, don't get me wrong, and we need to help incentivize developers down the road, but this isn't part of it, I think.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Uh, I think there's a motion in a second, so we'll need to retract.
That's what I was gonna ask, how do we, what's our next step?
We just have to all vote no, or
Or we retract.
Because it has to be a positive motion all the time.
So we made a motion to approve it, but we can just all vote no, shoot it down.
There, there already is a motion to approve on the table, so yes, it could
The motion could fail. Alright, so let's, let's call for the vote.
No.
Motion does not carry.
But my next thing on that would be, surely we probably need to get a hold of, I don't know who owns it. I can't, I can't remember, you told me that, can you get a hold of them and tell them that they, they probably need to take care of it? You know, because I'd like to see this proceed. Don't wanna be a stick in the mud, but we should, so they can move forward with it, so we can help them move forward later. Okay. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Antonio, this is B, approved purchase of speed trailer for police department. Moving.
Way, way, way back, uh, we've been looking at trying to get a new speed trailer, because the one that we have, we purchased in two thousand and four. Um, and right now, it just displays speed. Um, the ones that we're looking at, uh, will also display messages. And we wanna make sure that we can get as much information and, uh, on those displays as possible. So we looked at three, uh, different types of, um, speed trailers that had messages, messaging systems. Um, the first one was MPH Speed Monitor, the second one was Stalker, the other one was from Custom Signals. And you guys should have the information on the costs. And I did kind of a, a small, oh, I just pulled up an RFP that I had done way back for our, uh, RMS system and just gave certain requirements, certain, um, uh, um, yes, no responses for the display, the power, the radar, and some of the options. And the best one, and, and Officer Seymour did the majority of the research, spoke with some of these vendors. Um, and so he can, he can attest to some of these, uh, pros, cons, yes, nos, uh, to the, to the speed trailers. Um, but the one that myself and Officer Henderson really liked was the one from MPH. And we put the reasoning in the, uh, in the, um, in the paper that we provided you, and it boiled down to, we've done business with them before. They provide, um, accuracy and calibrations each year. We don't have to schedule it, they automatically do it. Um, through the Doppler store. They come out, let us know, it gets done, and they give a grant certificates. Um, it is a little bit more expensive, uh, but we do get grant money from GTSB that I'll be able to use up to forty-five hundred dollars. So if you guys have any questions, um, can answer some of those.
Will this supplement the current speed trailer, or is that gonna, are we gonna dispose of that?
Oh, we'll keep that one.
We have two now.
Yes, we have two.
Yep.
So this will supplement it, and this will give us message lines, uh, three, three message lines. It'll be for anything, projects, events, weather, you name it, you know, um. And we can, I think we get up to ninety, um, customized
Ninety.
Ninety preset, forty customized, so. Um, and every speech was pretty comparable, the other, the warranty was the big one. MPH provided a better warranty. You know, two-year electronic, um, warranty, and then a one-year for the trailer, so something. Trailer damage that come in, custom signals and stalker, everything was one year, and that's electronics and, and the trailer itself.
So double the warranty on the MPH.
With the electronics, just, just electronics.
When I first saw this, I was kind of against it, just because, oh, you know, another speed trailer, we already have one, but, um, I did a little research on it. Um, it sounds like they really do work. It actually does reduce the speed and, you know, that's something that a lot of people complain about in Nevada, is the high speeds on somebody's longer stretches through town. So I think some, this is definitely something we can do that will make a difference, so.
You know, we do have backlog of two to three requests or speech that are about the duration of times for, kind of help to get two out at once.
Yeah, and this, we'll go back to a resource allocation too. So now we have two, and if we have an issue on North Eleventh Street, and then on West Third and West I, we can put one there and then, or the other one somewhere else. Also, two, it collects data. So if somebody says, hey, we're getting a bunch of speeding down ABC Street, we can collect that data.
Yeah.
And then we can say, hmm, no, or yeah, we do have a problem. So that way, we can deploy our resources a little bit more strategically than just saying, one person said one car went by at a, you know, an exuberant amount of speed. Now granted, nobody should be speeding, but when we deploy officers and they Now granted, nobody should be speeding, but when we deploy officers and they sit there for thirty minutes and they don't see a car go by, that's thirty minutes we could have been somewhere else.
And I like the fact that you can put messages on this. I mean, I'll just use an example that you guys have in your little uh, report here, water main break. I mean, we have some major construction issues sometimes where we're blocking half a street, this would be huge, you know, a fund. You know, or something, you know, this would be awesome that, you know, this, any, but all departments can use it, like you said, and it's like, hey, you know, slow down and give them a warning, I've been blowing up on an accident or something, or.
Right, and you know, this is something like mainly, um, daytime and maybe some nighttime, because we do have hitches on some of our explorers. Um, this was, this would be a huge, uh, benefit to prevent secondary crashes. When we have crashes on Highway thirty, we can deploy that at least probably a half mile from where the crash is, get people slowed down, and we can minimize those secondary crashes, because that's a big issue with the DOT, especially on Highway thirty and at the at-grade intersections that we have. Um, the secondary crashes happen more often than people think. Now, maybe a tap or whatever, but those secondary crashes, they count. Yeah.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of the MPH unit, option one.
I'll second it. Any other discussion or questions?
Is this all in our, your budget to purchase those?
Yes, it is. So we, we've discussed it with, uh, Director Martinez, and then also to forty-five hundred dollars that we get from GTSB.
Right.
How soon will we get it? Did I miss that?
By July one, and MPH was able to.
So they were the only ones able to do that?
Yep. Apparently motherboards are.
Yeah.
Very scarce. Any other discussion? Let's vote.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. This time of reports, start with Jordan, the administrator.
Yeah, uh, had several meetings with Brenda over the last couple of weeks. We continue to have several meetings and talk on a regular basis, which is good. Uh, we had our Pizza Pie Loosa, which was a great turnout. Uh, leadership Nevada, ADC as well as NEDC had a Dev twenty-two conference, uh, Main Street meeting, and then met with Barb as well.
Any questions for Jordan? Other council activity? I don't know how he usually does this.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor, you got anything?
Oh, yeah, well, so, yeah, sure. No, um, I, that was, February is still kind of happening behind the scenes, we're, um, we're trying to make plans for next year, so that whole month is just, um, something to look forward to in the middle of winter, and really looking forward to February twenty-twenty-four, when we can be inside the fieldhouse and doing a bunch of, um, fun stuff inside as well. Um, personally, I secured some Story County Housing Trust money for, uh, owner occupied repairs. We'll be putting together a dream team to, um, get into some of the homes in, in the city limits, including trailers, um, to be able to do some repair, some repair work. Um, so, looking forward to, um, trying to identify some folks that can walk into a situation. Um, you know, toilet's about ready to fall through the floor, that kind of, kind of stuff. Um, where it's a little more than a handyman, um, the, the work is, is contracted with area contractors. Um, and so that, this person, this, this, this team of two or three folks I'm looking for, um, would go in, assess what's going on, and initiate the process. Um, the, um, Story County Trust focuses on those that are thirty percent of the area's poverty level or below, and so, um, may, maybe good to partner um, with Mike Thelmerfeldt and some other, other area folks, where folks are living in their houses, this is so they can stay, stay there, um. So if you, if you know of someone that's maybe recently retired or something, we have built some technical assistance funds into this grant so that they can at least be compensated for their time a bit to make those decisions and to spend time, um, securing that, um, contractor work for those, on behalf of those folks, so. That's kind of what I've been doing. Council, you guys, look at me.
Well, I just hosted a meeting to introduce public art a bit with Park and Rec and Main Street and the Design Committee, and we had an artist in who's worked in Charles City and Jefferson, and you know, we'll see what happens with that, but it's kind of exciting and inspiring and keep it rolling.
Okay. I would say, what Jordan was talking about, Pizza Blues, it was pretty awesome, you know. It could have been rolling for us to sit in the dunk tank, but it was good. I think we raised some pretty good money there, and it was, you know, I kind of, a few things happened on the fly, which I think were good things, like the, a lot of the food trailers stayed open late, you know, and they were super busy. Um, a lot of them, I heard, you know, I'm pretty good friends with a couple of the guys, like those smoking J's guys, and they said, we sold out, we'll leave it. Which is awesome, if you sell everything out, you know. Um, I've talked to a few other people that want to be involved next year, I said, well, we'll have room, so. They said, is it gonna do it? I said, yeah, I can't believe we're not gonna do it again, it was too successful, so it was pretty awesome. A lot of good feedback I got. And I think I got home till twelve. They made us clean up garbage cans. I was okay. A lot of high school boys standing around, we made them move a garbage can, so it worked out, so. No, it was pretty awesome, I think it was a great event, so. I think everyone's looking forward to next year.
How many days?
No, we didn't meet, uh, we won't meet until June, so, uh, it's still moving forward as always, but to kind of piggyback on the Pizza Pie Loosa, it was just it was a long, long, long day, and I paid for it on Sunday, but, and a little bit on Monday, took that day off too. But, uh, all in all, between the vendors, you know, I was, you know, led the vending portion of it, it was my duty. Um, yeah, I got nothing but great feedback from all the vendors. They all said they'd be back next year, so.
One thing I did forget to mention was Pizza Pie Loosa, Pie Loosa probably would not have been possible without all of the great help, the volunteers, you know, the fire, the police, everybody that, that was involved, uh, and if I forget you, I'm not meaning to, so I apologize, but um, that was truly, the public works, that was truly why I was successful, is because we had so much help and everybody got together on that day, and it was successful for that reason, so thank you for all the volunteers.
Fab. Give me.
Um, to kind of piggyback the Pizza Pie Loosa for, um, on the police end, uh, we didn't have too many issues. Um, uh, only, I think, one incident at George's and two at Lincoln Tap. Um, only made one arrest. Um, but as far as, uh, you know, excessive drinking and that, we didn't have any of that. Uh, people were really responsible, um, worth the drinking where they should be drinking. Um, and if they were outside of the parameters where they needed to drink, uh, we told them that where they could, and they were respectful and this and that, so we didn't really have any issues with that. Um, concert, no issues, um, just a few little things here and there. Um, but yeah, we, I was able to, um, cut the folks that worked the Pizza Pie Palooza, uh, early, uh, because the street was, was fairly decent, I had enough, uh, officers that were on regular shift to, to kind of handle everything. Um, Officer Salentano's back, uh, this is his first week from, uh, his leave, and, uh, so we got him back in the groove. Uh, we got a report back from our officer in the academy, he's doing good. Um, uh, I spoke with Jordan, or sent an email out last week. Um, two thousand and nineteen, we did a chalk the walk type deal, sidewalk chalk, um, and I want, really want to do that again. So, um, I will, uh, get with Jordan, I really want to get Main Street involved. Um, and, uh, some vendors and, you know, food, drinks, you know, however it may be, and then do a kid zone in the green space, uh, because we did that that year with the Jump House, and I think we had a dunk tank, that's the thing, we did popcorn or hot dog, that's how we acquired all them hot dogs that are still floating around here. I was like, we'll use those, but, um, but yeah, so, really, I think, I think, I think we're over COVID. Okay, so, um, I really want to get, uh, back into the police department, doing activities, getting involved with the community again. Um, I spoke with Lonnie, uh, with, uh, Story County Medical, um, we're looking at doing Kid Safety Day again next May. So, um, we did it one year, it was great, and then COVID hit, so. Questions, concerns? Thanks.
Brenda.
Good evening, council. A couple of comments for you today. I'd, uh, also echo the sentiment on congratulations on a great event. But I look at things through a little different lens than, uh, some of the others in the room, so I don't think that we could have wrote a check for the amount of great advertising we got on a regional basis, so uh, to, to get picked up even by one of the stations out of Des Moines would be awesome, but the fact that we got covered twice and in a lot of good follow-up on, on the event, I think is great, and I remember vividly, uh, Mayor Barker asking that night, who was, who invented Nevada before, so. Uh, I look at any opportunity where we can shed a, a lens on the positive things and the beautiful downtown and the collaboration of the community, I think is awesome, so I think it was great, uh, for the folks that live here, but even a great opportunity we have to showcase, uh, a wonderful community. I, I also feel like the tension at Burke, um, to be able to highlight our largest employer, their generosity and the opportunities there was, was awesome. I, I'll talk a little bit about the Housing Trust Award that, that Barb mentioned, uh, I every year, the city of Nevada has regularly contributed to the Story County Housing Trust Fund. Well, there have been projects done in Nevada and around Nevada, uh, this is the first time we've actually funded a project dedicated to Nevada, and so I applaud Barb and her work, uh, to do that, and I promised her we're gonna get there, we're gonna get the paperwork figured out, but um, so I appreciate those contributions. I actually, uh, am the vice chair of that board, and so it was fun to be able to see that we'll put a substantial amount of money back into renovating. The good timing with a lot of the things that are going on in terms of higher prices of things and the ability that people can access these funds to make needed improvements. And finally, talk a little bit on the development front, we are uh, bringing in a hotel developer. You might remember pre-pandemic, there was, uh, some discussion about attracting a new hotel. Uh, we're going to start those discussions again. Uh, we're really focused really in the Score neighborhood. Uh, while it's great to have business travelers, I think, uh, how amazing would it be as we're continuing to enhance the assets in the Score neighborhood, to be able to keep those folks within the community, spending their dollars within the community. So, uh, the developer will be here on May thirty-first, and we're gonna be hosting at five-thirty that evening, a potential investment meeting. I think it's uh, probably not a surprise that we, we're hoping to raise the money from the local community so that we can make this project happen. So, if you have any interest at all, you're sure welcome to join us. Five-thirty, we're gonna be meeting at Story County Medical Center's meeting room. Yeah, you just need the mask on the way in, but when we get to the meeting room, uh, we can take off our masks. So, with that, I take any economic development questions you might have. They're all Palooza'd out. I'll turn it over to Parks, sir.
Hello there. Uh, today, we welcomed our newest employee to our department. Uh, we, uh, welcome Sarah Lancaster today, and she'll be our new program assistant. Uh, Sarah's worked with us on a part-time basis over the last four to five years. She's really been involved in most all our programs in some way, shape, or form. And, uh, she's also a certified pool and spa operator, so we're glad to have her on board, and we'll get her, get her rolling. Um, in regards to the pool, we are on schedule, I think, to open, uh, June fourth is what our plan is. Uh, we do have some school groups coming in June second and third, that Thursday and Friday. We have a lot of new staff, so there's a lot of training that needs to happen here, uh, probably next week. Uh, weather is not going to be conducive for it this week, and we're still working to get things cleaned up and everything shipshape out there, so. Um, coming along, and, uh, you know, we're looking forward to get rolling. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Anything for Tim?
Thank you.
All this you want in the lineup? Okay, Karen. Karen?
Um, well, Karen has been pushing on really well. That's really did most of the preparations today on our we've been working with First Interstate, trying to get transitioned to and routing number and.
Take vacation next week, so I'll be out next week, and if you have a question or something, you still email me, I probably will check, um, every now and then.
Jordan says no.
So, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Yes, Mr. Engineering.
I have some project updates.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm not sure quite how close, but I think we're very, very close to having the downtown project completely done and ready for acceptance. I had prepared the documents to accept it last week, but the, uh, I was informed that the unexpected sewer construction at Sixth and M wasn't quite done, it's supposed to be completed today, so we'll have a final amount on that. There was a little hiccup with, along the way with that one, but it, uh, I believe it is completely done. Um, on the twenty-twenty-two street improvements, the, uh, uh, the Eleventh Street portion from U Avenue to W Avenue, uh, was scheduled to start, I think, today or tomorrow. I, I haven't heard whether they were in town, but we did get a stake last, at the end of last week, so it should be, uh, should be started this week. So then, other than that, the S fourteen portion from M, M Avenue North to the underpass, that one is still, still scheduled for the future, but, uh, we haven't quite, we haven't heard a definitive yes or no, or what we have to do to get the uh, both sanitary sewer through the underpass there. Um, apparently, the UP Railroad isn't concerned about surface improvements, the roadway through there, so that's, that's not an issue. Um, but we haven't heard a definitive yes or no on the sanitary sewer. We got a report back from the other day, now it's got to go to another party with the UP, so hopefully we'll get something out of them very, very soon. So, we'll let you know. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad.
I mean, we put the sanitary and storm sewer on S fourteen?
The, we, we intended to extend the storm sewer under the underpass. But we have discovered that there are actually two int- that was just to pick up the ditch water on that rural section north of there.
Yeah.
But we have determined there are actually two intakes, uh, that the UP Railroad has that picks up that ditch water. So it isn't essential that we get storm sewer up through there, but we do have plans to do that. And the only reason we wouldn't want to do that is for future extensions of the roadway north from there. If there was a curb and gutter section, we would probably want storm sewer running north. Uh, it isn't essential for this portion, that's for sure.
Okay, okay.
So, if there is a problem with, with the UP Railroad and getting any of those pipes through there, we'll stop the storm sewer short. We have intakes on immediately south of the underpass, and with the, uh, with the sanitary, we could actually stop it short of the underpass too, and then bore a service in. I'll make our plans to connect as soon as that sewer gets there, and we could bore a service line in for them, or they can do that.
Okay. Okay.
One way or another, we'll get it, we'll get it done.
Okay.
Anything else for Larry? Any last words for the cause? Oh, sorry, legal. I'm good. I didn't know the answer to that question, sorry. I didn't know the answer to that question. Sorry, I, I knew that. Sorry. All right, now. Motion for a turn?
Uh, we're going to close.
No, we're not gonna do that.
I said that.
With some of the events, yeah, with some of the events going on, I figure we can push that back a little bit.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I tabled the close session.
Move it, Jordan. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barb.
Nice job.
Okay, I'm gonna break a few. I'm always pointing base.